Good evening again. It's good to be with you.
We're doing a lot of preparation, looking forward to your insights and to a good time of discussion in God's Word. I want to, in this opening session, give us an overview of the book. Now even though we have a generous amount of time in this study, we're probably not going to get to hit every part of Hebrews with equal detail, but hopefully we'll give you enough that you can go back and put flesh on the bones. Also, a word about style. As you know, if you've been to these past studies with me, I tend to be a verse-by-verse sort of speaker, working my way through a passage. Brother Henry has a different gift. He is going to go to other parts of the Scripture, not divorced from Hebrews, of course, but you might find yourself saying, "What on earth are we doing in Matthew?" Or back in the Old Testament or something, you might say, "What is going on here?" But you just follow what he's saying, you're going to see it connects. And he's very good at bringing in the wider purposes of God as they work through the Scriptures. So without further ado, let's look at Hebrews, Chapter 1. I just want to read the first four verses. By the way, I have a very slight cold. I'm praying that it doesn't get worse. I'm taking all kinds of medicines to decongest myself, but I'm a Pennsylvania German on the outside with a bit of Scottish mixed in. I'm a Latin on the inside. I love giving hugs. I love, you know, a hearty embrace, but I'm not doing it toward you brethren, not for any personal reason other than not to share my cold. So please don't take that amiss. Hebrews, Chapter 1 and Verse 1, and some of the brethren just said, "Thank the Lord." They weren't interested in being hugged by me anyway. Hebrews 1, Verse 1, I understand. Hebrews 1 and Verse 1. "God, who at various times and in various ways spoke in time past to the fathers by the prophets, has in these last days spoken to us by his Son, whom he has appointed heir of all things, through whom also he made the worlds, who being the brightness of his glory and the expressed image of his person, and upholding all things by the word of his power, when he had by himself purged our sins, sat down at the right hand of the majesty on high, having become so much better than the angels, as he has by inheritance obtained a more excellent name than they." Now often Bible students have noticed about Hebrews, Chapter 1, that it is one of the richest portions of the New Testament about the person of the Lord Jesus Christ. Of course, we know the Lord Jesus really is on every page of Scripture, so it's not like there aren't many other contenders that talk about him. But really, when you think about three great chapters that talk about who the Lord Jesus is and what he's done, John, Chapter 1 comes to mind, Colossians, Chapter 1 comes to mind, and Hebrews, Chapter 1 comes to mind. And Hebrews 1, right out of the gate, as it were, without getting distracted or bogged down with any side issues, it wants to tell us all about the true and living God who speaks, and who speaks not just through prophets here and there at different times through history, but finally, at the end of these days, it's a technical term, as we'll see, "He has spoken to us in Son," is literally what it says. So there's no thought of something being lost in translation. There's no thought of something getting its wires crossed where the message isn't coming through. The Lord Jesus accurately conveys the message of God to us as the Son of the Father. And the Book of Hebrews is all about the Lord Jesus, and as we just read in Verse 4, it's about him being better. Now that particular Greek word that is translated "better," or some translations even render it "superior," that word occurs 19 times in the New Testament. Thirteen of those occurrences are in the Book of Hebrews. One of your handouts will have a list of those betters. There's 12 different Scriptures in Hebrews, and one of them mentions "better" twice. And by the way, all of those handouts are from a packet of handouts that Brother Randy Amos developed for Pine Bush, for the men's study here, I believe, thank you very much, buddy, back in 1996. And so my wife very graciously typed those handouts up very quickly. So if there's typos, you'll understand it was a rush job, and we didn't put Brother Randy's name on it, but I do want to give credit that I didn't invent these. We're not plagiarizing them. They were the product of Brother Randy Amos, and so we give credit where credit is due. But you can look through those handouts on your own. Some very valuable things for the Book of Hebrews. Now Hebrews is going to emphasize that Christ is better or superior. Right off, it's going to start out saying he's better than the angels. And really, he's starting at the top of the created order, because the angels are the beings among created beings. They are the greatest in power, in glory, and in intelligence. And wherever you see human beings interacting with angels in the Bible, it's usually a mind-blowing type of experience for human beings. Now about 20 years ago or so, there was a great fad that came through where you'd see people driving around with bumper stickers, "Angels" on board. I always gave those cars a little bit of extra room, because I thought, you know, if this guy's leaving it too much to the angel, he might not be as careful about his driving as he ought to be. And there was, of course, a television program that I never saw called "Touched by an Angel." And there were many different books written about angels and supposed interaction with angels. Well, the vast majority, if not all of that, as far as I could tell, was rubbish, because when we talk about angels in the Bible, they are, shall we say, terrible beings, not terrible in the sense of morally bad, but in the classic sense of that English word. They inspired terror, because they had great power, and they were involved in very important divine missions that perhaps we'll refer to in the course of our studies. But in any case, when a Hebrew person, and I remind you, this is the Epistle to the Hebrews, so these are people that have professed faith in Christ, as we'll see, but they are of Hebrew background. So they know the Old Testament, they know the law, they are very attached to the temple, to the sacrifices of the Levitical system, and also very attached to angels. So throughout the book, the Holy Spirit is going to use the author, whomever he was. I don't know who it was. Some argue strongly for Paul, some argue strongly against Paul, but the Bible just doesn't tell us. And from very early centuries, there was great debate among Christians about who the author was. I'll solve that question for you by saying this: The author was the Holy Spirit. This is given by inspiration of the Spirit of God. And the way the Spirit of God uses his penman to set out this argument is to show the superiority of the Lord Jesus Christ to anything that they might compare him to. To compare him to angels, or to Moses in Chapter 3, to Joshua in Chapter 4, to the Aaronic priesthood, starting in Chapter 5, to the sacrifices, especially in Chapters 9 and 10, and to the old covenant. In fact, the new covenant that the Lord Jesus has inaugurated is also better. So we have a better high priest with better sacrifices according to a better covenant with better promises. The Lord Jesus is better. Okay? So if you tune out the rest of the week, and I hope you won't, but if you don't remember anything else, remember, Hebrews tells you the Lord Jesus is better. Now, not just better in comparison with Judaism, but we could compare him to any belief system today, whether it's some kind of religion in Christendom that would call itself Christian, but would be an admixture of Jewish tradition, or Christian tradition, or other systems of men that are brought in and grafted to certain things in the Bible, or things that are misapplied dispensationally. We have all kinds of groups out there that have errors like this. Over and over, Hebrews is going to bring us back to Christ and say he's better. Now in your handouts, you have some outlines, and there's also a link for some electronic handouts, three docs that we didn't get to print out, but they're in the cloud, and you can download them at your leisure. And I've sent that link already to some of you whose email addresses I had. To others, you can see me on that. But in any case, here's just a very simple outline I came across for the book that divides it into three sections. This is not in any of your notes, so at least I don't think it is. So some are getting the handouts now. We'll give them a moment to get settled, so they can write this down if they wish. This was by an article in the Tyndale Bulletin. That's an academic journal that is produced by evangelical scholars in Great Britain. And this brother, Steve Stanley, was his name, divides the Book of Hebrews into three parts. So Part 1, Chapters 1 through 7, the superiority of Christ. Chapters 1 through 7, the superiority of Christ. Chapters 8 through 10, the superiority of Christ ministry. The superiority of Christ ministry, that's Chapters 8 through 10. And finally, the resulting responsibilities of the people of God. The resulting responsibilities of the people of God. That's Chapters 11 through 13. Chapters 11 through 13. Okay, so number 1, the superiority of Christ, Chapters 1 through 7. Number 2, the superiority of Christ ministry, Chapters 8 through 10. And 3, the resulting responsibilities of the people of God, Chapters 11 through 13. And that's by a brother called Steve Stanley. Now anyone that wants to see that again afterwards, you feel free, and we can go over it once again. Now, we have to remember, when this book was written, these were very current issues, because it seems by everything he says, particularly from Chapters 5 through 10, that the tabernacle, sorry, that the Jewish offering system was still very much in force. It wasn't the tabernacle by then, although Hebrews is going to choose to go back to the tabernacle and describe the approach to God by using the tabernacle. There's probably some reasons for that. Maybe we'll get into that, maybe we won't. But anyway, it's going to talk about the tabernacle. We should know, however, that the temple was still standing in Jerusalem. So this book is before AD 70, because in AD 70, the Romans under Titus came and destroyed the city of Jerusalem, and the Lord's prophecy in Matthew 24, and he also cites it in the other synoptic Gospels, that not one stone of this temple would be left upon another, was literally fulfilled. If you go to Jerusalem today and you look at the Western Wall, which used to be known among Gentiles as the Wailing Wall, you go to that wall and you see people praying there, and you say, "Oh, they're praying at the temple wall." Well, not really. That wall is a retaining wall that was built in Herod's time to enlarge the precincts around the temple. So to make more room for shops and space and things that they needed for the feasts and for the pilgrims that came up to the temple, Herod wanted to enlarge this area and refurbish the temple, and John, Chapter 2, alludes to that. When the Lord Jesus says, "Destroy this temple, and in three days I will raise it up again," they say, what is it, 46 years this temple's been building, and you're going to do it in three days? So they refer to that refurbishment. And when you go there to Jerusalem today, you don't see one single stone of the temple left standing on another. You see a retaining wall that would have been under the ground that was surrounding the temple complex. So our Lord's prophecy was literally fulfilled in AD 70. And yet, for the people that got this letter, you can imagine what they were going through, that here they were, people that were ethnically Jews, and that they had now come and said they believed Jesus was the Messiah, or as they would have put it, "Yeshua Hamashiach," Jesus the Messiah. And if you have any Jewish friends, you'll know that that is a very fraught name to them, that the very name of Jesus or Christ can, with certain Jews at least, inspire a very vitriolic reaction. I have had Jewish people in Jerusalem, when mentioning the Lord Jesus to them, their demeanor completely changes. They become very angry. Not everyone, of course, but very angry, very displeased. I have known of Jewish people that have spat when his name is mentioned. We should understand, however, especially nowadays, that in the last almost 2,000 years, the Jews have been the most persecuted ethnic group on the face of the earth. And many times, sadly, that persecution has been done towards them in the name of Christ. Now is that just? Of course not. Would the Lord Jesus sanction that? Of course not. In fact, the Lord Jesus made it quite clear in John 18, "My kingdom is not of this world; otherwise my servants would fight, that I should not be delivered; but now is my kingdom not from hence." So the Lord repudiated the use of the sword. He told Peter, "Put up your sword." That is not the way to spread God's kingdom or to build the church, which is the part of that overarching kingdom that we're involved in today. We don't do it by compulsion. We don't do it by forcing people into it. We certainly don't do it at the point of a sword or a gun. But we must remember that there were pogroms, that there was the Holocaust, that there were many professing Christians that in terrible events in history either directly participated or turned a blind eye to allow those things to happen. So I say that to say, we have to be a bit sensitive when we approach people with the gospel. It's not that we're ashamed of the Lord Jesus. It's not that we can soft pedal the issues, but we have to remember, when we just say the name, that carries baggage with a lot of people. Now at this stage, when Hebrews was written, that baggage was yet future, but it was still a contentious issue, because the nation was divided about the Lord Jesus. And the Lord had said in Matthew 10, that he came not to bring peace on the earth but a sword. Now you say, Keith, you just told us that the Lord said not to use the sword, but what the Lord was speaking, of course, was metaphorically. And he spoke about dividing one's household, that families were going to be divided. You thought it was bad before, when on one side of the family, there were the New York Jets fans, and on the other side, there were the Giants fans, right? This was more contentious than that. Now, the question is, what do you think of the Lord Jesus Christ? Whose son is he? Is he a blasphemer? Is he a seditious person? Were the Jewish leaders right in delivering him up to be crucified? Or has this been a colossal mistake? Has God really vindicated him by raising him up and declaring him to be both Lord and Christ? And these were the issues that they would hear about. Now Hebrews makes it clear that these folks, like in Chapter 10, go there a moment with me, these folks had made a profession of faith in the Lord Jesus. And he says, for instance, in Verse, let me get my bearings here, sorry, one moment, Verse 32, Hebrews 10 and 32. "But recall the former days, in which after you were illuminated, you endured a great struggle with sufferings, partly while you were made a spectacle, both by reproaches and tribulations, and partly while you became companions of those who were so treated. For you had compassion on me in my chains, and joyfully accepted the plundering of your goods, knowing that you have a better and an enduring possession for yourselves in heaven." So these folks weren't milquetoasts. They weren't wimps. They had come forth and said, "We believe Jesus is Messiah. We believe he's Lord and Christ." And they had begun to suffer for saying that. And they had identified with other believers, like the writer of Hebrews, who was suffering, who was imprisoned. He'll allude to that again in Chapter 13. And so this was a time when persecution was ramping up against believers. Now, the problem is that as you go through Hebrews, you find out that some of these believers seem to have been wavering, and some of them were downright immature. And so it's probable that, like many of the letters in the New Testament, we can't just look at the audience as monolithic. In other words, they're not all the same type of people. It's not all everybody there who's mature, solid, grounded in the faith. There may be some believers there that are a bit immature, that haven't grown like they should. There may also be there some people who are professors but not possessors. In other words, they claim to be the Lord Jesus, they've confessed to the Lord Jesus, but like the Lord would tell in the parable of the seeds and the soils, that although they seemed to receive it with joy, when persecution and hardship and difficulty came, for the sake of the Lord, then they fell away. And we'll find that there's five or six warning passages in this book that emphasize that to us, that are going to tell us not to cast away our confidence. And he goes on to say that in the next few verses after the ones we read in Hebrews 10. So the rider is going to have to ride a few horses. By the way, I find myself doing that all the time nowadays, because I can never take for granted that everybody sitting in a sizable group is necessarily a believer. I can't take that for granted, because I've had a lot of people come to me after a meeting and tell me very, very strange things. I'll give you one quick story just to illustrate that. Some years ago, I was in a place in a galaxy far, far away, a long time ago, and I was preaching on Mark, Chapter 5, the Lord healing the Gadarene demoniac. And you remember that that man was in terrible bondage to unclean spirits, and he was chained up by the locals to try and protect him from harming himself or from harming anyone else. And when the Lord Jesus came, he liberated that man completely from that demonic power. He saved him from that oppression and made that man a completely new creature in Christ Jesus. We see the man sitting at the feet of the Lord Jesus, the place of a learner. We see him clothed, whereas before he was naked, and we see him in his right mind, whereas before he was out of his head screaming and yelling and whatnot. And I made the point in the message, that so very often, people that find themselves under demonic oppression, or even possessed by a demon, have opened themselves up to those powers. And I began to enumerate some things that people can do that open them up to bad spiritual influences. I started talking about, you know, people that go to psychics, and tarot cards, and seances, and things like this. Well, I was in a very small assembly, and it had great bona fides as an orthodox place. I mean, I thought, you know, these people could not only quote chapter and verse, but they could give me a few footnotes from F.W. Grant and John Nelson Darby and other people to kind of put me straight if I got off track a little. And one younger guy in the meeting, not young, but he was probably in his early 30s by the look of him, approached me. Now he had been at the breaking of bread. He had participated, at least as far as taking the symbols of the bread in the cup. He hadn't said anything. And when he came up to me, he said to me, "Have you ever gone to a psychic?" I said, "No." He said, "I have." And he said, "They've told me things that are amazing, you know, things that came true." I said, "Well, man, you've got to be really careful, because Satan has knowledge, but he can really deceive you. You don't want to be, you know, messing with that stuff at all." So he went on and said, "No, no, I think there's some value in that stuff." And then a few minutes later, as we're walking down to the coffee break, he says, "You know, when I look at you, I just get really mad. I hate God when I look at you." I thought, "Oh, boy." You know, kind of checked, was it my tie? And then I realized, he meant because I'm physically disabled. And he was looking at me, a disabled person, and saying, "You know, well, what kind of a God is this, that allows this boy to come into this world with this disability?" And I began to say to him, "Listen, I don't look at this as something negative. This is something that the Lord has used in my life in a multitude of ways, to make me depend on him, probably to make me have the realization in the first place that I couldn't save myself, that I need help. Because if you need help in the lesser things of life, if you need help getting dressed, or you need help getting from one side of a room to another, how much more do you need help getting to heaven? How much more do you need to be saved from your sins and saved from the wrath to come? And we can't do that ourselves." And I tried to tell him all the ways the Lord had used it, and he just shook his head and said some very unkind things, nasty things, about the Lord Jesus. And I wondered, not only was I questioning whether this man, who was obviously in fellowship in the local church, whether he was actually a believer, I was also questioning what kind of spirit he was operating under. And so that's an extreme example. That doesn't happen to me every day, okay? It stands out. Yes, exactly right, Brother. Mark, Chapter 1, there's a great example of that, with the demon in the synagogue in Capernaum, and the sadness that there, as it would later be described, "They have the Scriptures which are read every Sabbath day." And yet here was a demon-possessed man in the synagogue, and they couldn't do anything about it, it's demon. I say that to say, that even in our congregations, we can't take it for granted that everybody has the right foundation, because today there's so many watered-down versions of the Gospels. And even if the gospel is rightly preached, we remember the Lord Jesus was a perfect preacher, right? You wouldn't fault the Lord Jesus. He is the master teacher. And yet, in the Lord Jesus ministry, there were so-called disciples that went away and said, "This teaching is too hard for us," and they wouldn't follow him any longer. And the Lord Jesus spoke about the wheat and the tares and so forth. So we always have to be aware that where God is active and where the word is preached, the devil is trying to steal it away. He's trying to obfuscate. He's trying to confuse matters, to muddy the gospel waters, if you will. And therefore, we have to keep bringing people back to the central truths of who Christ is and what he has done. And that is what Hebrews is going to do for us. Now, before we look any further at some of the earlier verses, and that was just a very bare-bones intro, there may be other comments you want to make by way of introduction, or even other outlines you want to bring forth at this time. Feel free, and certainly that includes you, Brother Henry. Is there a mic that they'll get when they participate? Does anybody know? Okay, so you can either come up to the podium, which would be preferred, because then it gets heard over the internet, and it's better for the recording, or really, really project, put on your street preacher voice, okay? Now, one of the things I enjoy about Hebrews is that the Holy Spirit here is going to compare the Lord Jesus to what pertained to the Old Testament, to what pertained to what had been given before. But he doesn't do it in a way that denigrates anything that had been given before, because after all, it was God-given. I mean, when we take the prophets, for example, we're not saying that the prophets are of no value. God spoke in time past to the fathers through the prophets. So there's value in the prophets. And the apostles repeatedly in the Book of Acts, and also throughout the epistles, especially Hebrews, they're going to go back to the prophets, even to people we don't always think even to people we don't always think of as prophets, like David, who is called a prophet in Scripture, and Moses, who was a different kind of a prophet, not a prophet in exactly the same style as Isaiah and Jeremiah, but a prophet nonetheless. And they're going to go back to these prophets by way of authority. So, you can imagine, when you're trying to convince somebody that the Lord Jesus really is better, that He's someone they need to know, they need to be saved, and you're gonna compare Him to something else, you need to have good authorities. You can't just say, "Well, my opinion is the Lord Jesus is better." Because they can say, "Well, my opinion is, I don't know that for a fact, so I'm not going to change to Him, you know? I think Buddhism is better, or I think atheism is better, or I think whatever." You know, they'll put out something else. It's not a matter of opinion. It's a matter of God's revelation, that God has been progressively revealing Himself, and now the Lord has come and brought the capstone of that revelation. Kind of like our educational system. The kids are starting to get back to school in my town. I don't know about where you live. But, you know, some of these elementary school kids, they go to school and they're dealing with addition and subtraction and division and multiplication. And they're dealing with, you know, sums like one plus two is three. I really like that stuff, because I'm not particularly good at math, you know? I'm not even, I'm not, I'm trying not to look at the Wilbur table, okay? Because they're all really good at that stuff, okay? And I don't want this to provoke me to envy. But I look back on those halcyon days of my elementary school and I think, "Ah, wasn't it great when we had addition and multiplication and subtraction and division? And when you had numbers that made sense?" And then somewhere along the line, you got to junior high and they hit you over the head with variables, you know? X and Y and C and A and B. They try to make it all right by telling you about Pythagoras or Euclid or somebody. And to me, it didn't make it all right. It was just difficult, you know? And you can imagine. Now, you bring in somebody, like I have a good friend who has a doctorate in applied mathematics. Now, he is so smart, he is so well-educated, he cannot explain to me what he does. He can't, you know? And, I mean, he tries to use analogies, but I just, I don't get it, you know? And some of my other friends feel the same way, so they all have come to the conclusion, they think he works for the CIA. Because they're like, you know, "He can't even tell us what he does. He must be a spy. This is just a cover job." Well, you think about that math mathematician. He doesn't say, "Oh, man, subtraction and addition and multiplication and those numbers, they're stupid." No, because he still needs those principles, right? Those are the basic building blocks. The same way, you may be William Shakespeare. You may be able to write a sonnet that almost 500 years later, people are still cribbing lines from it to send to their wannabe girlfriend, right? And few suggestions for some of the young men at the study, maybe. You know, Shakespearean sonnets. You may be a Shakespeare and can spin together beautiful iambic pentameter. But you can't do it until you learn the 26 letters in the English alphabet, can you? Unless you're gonna be, you know, writing in another language that has a different number of letters. Okay, my point is, you have to learn the basic before you can go on to the complex. And it's the same way. The prophets were telling us things that we needed to know, things that we still go back to and cite as authority. But now that the Lord Jesus has come, the revelation is on a whole different level. We're not waiting for another in a succession of spokesmen. The final word, as Michael Card called it in one of his songs, the final word has now come, the Lord Jesus. He's given us that revelation of God. Now, you might say, "Well, listen, the Lord Jesus didn't write any books. The Lord Jesus went back to heaven and didn't write anything." That's true, technically speaking. But you remember what He said to the apostles before He went? You can read this in John 14 and also John 16, that He was going to send to them the Holy Spirit, who was going to guide them into all truth. And it was going to bring to their remembrance all the things that He had told them. And so, when the apostles or the people working with the apostles, like John Mark, who worked with Peter, when they wrote down these things, they were writing down the apostles' doctrine. That's what Acts 242 calls it. Now, what is the apostles' doctrine? Is it their doctrine in the sense that they invented it? No. It is their doctrine in the sense that they received it from the risen Christ through His Holy Spirit to those apostles to write it down. And they have given us the revelation of the Lord Jesus Christ. In fact, you'll know the final book of our New Testament begins that way, the revelation of Jesus Christ. So, all of these bits and pieces we got through time, we've now got the final dose of revelation through the Son of God. And the Son, as we'll see in the next few verses, is one who can accurately show us who God is. Comments or questions at this point? Yeah, amen. Amen. Summarizing, just for those online or for the recording, Brother Brian shared that the Mount of Transfiguration pictures this phenomenon that I've been describing, that we've got the Lord Jesus there with Elijah and Moses, and they are speaking of what He's about to do. Luke says, they talk about the exodus, He's about to make a Jerusalem. And they recede into the background. In fact, when the cloud covers the Peter, James, and John, who are up there as witnesses, the voice comes saying, "This is my beloved Son. Hear ye Him." It's emphatic. Don't listen to those others. I mean, they, yes, bear testimony to Christ, but now Christ is that final spokesman. So, even to this day, Brother Brian pointed out, Jews, and we could point out Muslims and other religious people too, will go back to heroes who were prophets of one sort and another. But the Lord Jesus is at a different level from them. They recede into the background, He goes higher. In fact, the Muslims, if I understand their system correctly, have the notion that the later the prophet, the greater his person, the greater his revelation. You can kind of understand that. If you put it in IT terms, you know, the newer the software, the better it's supposed to be. Now, you can't prove that by every iteration of Windows. But mostly, as things get newer, there's progress made, right? And there's advance. But not so. Because they will say, "Isa," as they called Jesus, that He was a great prophet, but they'll say, "The greatest of the prophets was Mohammed." That is a very important practical issue. Brother Joe Wilbur had his hand up. Amen. Yes, amen. Again, to summarize Brother Wilbur's comments, this is an essential point for those who were teetering, if they hadn't put their full faith in Christ. And now they're being told, you know, "Look, we've got the prophets and all this with Judaism." They have to make the point from the Old Testament scriptures because this is the recognized authority. This is what they know, that God spoke to them. Brother Joe didn't cite it, but I think of John 5, where the Lord Jesus said, "You search the scriptures; from them ye think ye have eternal life; and these are they which speak of me." So, that's exactly what Brother Wilbur is saying here, that he has to bring in the scriptures and show them the Son, not just affirm that the Son is the spokesman come from God, but show by the scripture that He's the spokesman come from God. And we'll see, Hebrews does that in very specific detail, that the Lord Jesus came, as Galatians 4:4 puts it, in the fullness of time, that He came at the right time, in the right place, in the exact manner that the New Testament, or sorry, that the Old Testament said He would. And so, He's held up before them as the one that they need to hear and put their faith in fully, if they're teetering. And by the way, also, you remember that even in the Gospels, you can think of people saying, like when the blind man who was sent to Salome was healed, and they brought him in for interrogation, and they wanted to know about Jesus. They said, "We are Moses' disciples. As for this man, we don't know where he's from," you know? And he said, "Well, this is a marvelous thing, that you don't know where he's from, but it's not been heard from the foundation of the world that someone opened the eyes of the blind. And yet, obviously, I'm here as the living proof that that's what he's done." So, he starts to get a bit sarcastic with them. And the Lord Jesus just shows, as he goes on to say in John 5, after that verse I quoted, he says, "I have come in My Father's name, and Me you have not received; another will come in His own name, and Him you will receive." And isn't it amazing how many men and women come and affirm that they are something spiritual? They are like Elimus. They are the great power of God. They're somebody great, or Simon the sorcerer, another example from Acts. And yet, they don't have any of the scriptural backing to credential them, to give them the right properties to fulfill what the Old Testament says about Messiah. Now, before we go on, we should notice too that there's a contrast made between "in time past" to "the fathers by the prophets" and the phrase in verse two, "in these last days." And that is kind of technical jargon. Sort of like the way pundits today, when they talk about politics, they'll talk about the first hundred days. Now, what's that referred to? Well, it refers to, "How's the president doing in his first hundred days?" Please don't comment, that's not what we're here for, okay? You can talk about that on your own time. But in any case, that was kind of a benchmark. I'm not sure if it goes back, I think FDR, but it might have been another president, where they sort of said, "How's he doing in the first hundred days?" And so, thereafter, that phrase enters the lexicon as referring to a certain period of time in an early presidential administration. How are they doing? Well, in similar fashion, when we talk about "in these last days," or it could be rendered "at the end of these days," as Darby does, or "in these final days," there was the view that you have the days leading up to Messiah, and then you have the days when Messiah has come and is now entering in, or rather inaugurating or bringing in the kingdom that is promised in the Old Testament. And that's what this phrase is referring to. So, really, once the Lord Jesus has come on the scene, we are in the last days. Now, you could debate whether we're in the last of the last days. That's another question, obviously. But if we're thinking in how Jewish believers who were expecting Messiah would talk, this was a technical term. And he's saying, "Now, the messianic age has happened because Messiah has come. He's spoken to us in Son, whom He has appointed heir of all things, through whom also He made the worlds," and so forth. And in a moment, we'll get into these credentials that set the Lord Jesus apart. Any comments at this point? So, when we get to verse two, it says, "Whom He has appointed heir of all things, through whom also He made the worlds." So, that might be a little bit non-sequitur in our thinking. We'd probably, at least I would, reverse those phrases logically. I'd think about Him making the worlds or making the universe. It's the word for ages, which has the idea of things and time that's created. And so, He has made these things, and He's the heir of those things. He's the one who's going to inherit them. But He puts the heir first, because heir in the Bible is not just a technical legal term for somebody who inherits something. It's also a statement of rank. In the same way, that in a few verses, in verse six, he's gonna talk about the Lord Jesus being the firstborn. Now, it's important to recognize, firstborn is a term of rank, in the same way heir is a term of rank. So, I stress that, because you will get people like the false witnesses of Jehovah, the Russellites, as they used to be known, from the Watchtower Society and so forth. There's a lot of good things in Brooklyn. I'm thankful for Evergreen. But the Watchtower isn't it, right? Unfortunately, these people have a false gospel. And they'll come and tell you, "Oh, see, Jesus is called in Colossians 1, 'the firstborn of every creature.'" So, they'll say, "He's a creature, He's just the first one that was made." And yet, that doesn't even fit in with the context of Colossians 1 and what it says in the verses around it, nor does it fit in Hebrews 1. Because when we talk about the One who has made all things, He Himself is uncreated. He Himself, in other words, is eternal. He never had a beginning. And it's through Him that He also made the worlds. Now, we know, Colossians 1 says that, that all things were made by Him and for Him, and through Him all things consist or hold together. John, chapter one, will tell us that all things were made by Him, and without Him was not anything made that is made, in John 1, I believe it's verse three. So, the Lord Jesus is the one who is before all things, not only in that He was eternally pre-existent, but He is before them in the sense of rank. He's the heir of all things. All things were made for Him. "The earth is the Lord's, and the fullness thereof," Psalm 24:1. And we have to reckon with that, that this isn't our world. We can't say, "This land is my land, this land is your land," with all deference to Woody Guthrie. Sorry, is a catchy folk tune, but theologically incorrect. This is God's world. As a hymn writer said, "This is My Father's world." And Psalm 50 affirms that most strongly in Psalm 104 and many other passages of Scripture. And so, He is the one who is the maker of all things, but also the heir of all things. Now, in verse three, not just His position and His action, but His very nature, what He is essentially in His being, says in verse three, "Who being the brightness of His glory." Or some, like Mr. Darby, will use the word, "the effulgence of His glory." What does that mean? Well, the word has the thought. It can either be something that reflects glory, like the moon, or something that radiates glory, that gives off light, like the sun. And I think it's right, probably the better Greek scholars have come to the conclusion in this context, that it's the latter, that it's the radiance, the effulgence. He is the outshining of that glory. And Mr. Darby has a good footnote in his translation that talks about how if you've seen a sunbeam, you know what the sun is like. And so, it's the same way. You see the Lord Jesus, you know what God is like. As he put it in John 14, "He that hath seen Me hath seen the Father." Now, that would be absurd for a mere mortal human being to say, right? Someone who is only a human being could not say that, especially a fallen human being, which by definition is every human being apart from the Lord Jesus, who is sin apart or absolutely and totally without sin. A human being could not say, "If you've seen Me, you've seen God," any more than I could say, "Come with me to the basketball court. If you've seen Me, you've seen LeBron James." Now, in what sense could I say that? I'm not tall, I'm not muscular, I'm not African-American. I am not able to jump more than about a centimeter. And that only if there's like something coming at my feet that's highly volatile or dangerous. Even the centimeter might be in question at my stage of life. I cannot dunk. in question at my stage of life. I cannot dunk, I cannot shoot the three with any consistency, I cannot hit foul throws with greater plum, I cannot charge down into the key, I am in no way what Dick Vitale would call, "A real PTP-er, baby! Oh, boy!" I'm more of a diaper dandy. Or maybe on the All Pine team, I don't get a lot of PT, but I look good sitting on the bench. But I could in no way say that I am like LeBron James, that if you've seen me, it's just like seeing LeBron play. Well, the Lord Jesus could say it meaningfully. "If you've seen me, you've seen the Father, because I'm the very outshining, the effulgence, the radiance of the glory of God, of his glory." And he goes on to add to that, "The express image of his person," the word from which we get our word, "character." And it was originally a word that meant an imprint, a stamp of some sort, such as on a coin. So, you look on the quarter, and you see there the nice aquiline profile of our founding father, George Washington, right? And so, you see what Washington looks like there on the coin. You get a sense that if you had a time machine, you could go back and you wouldn't confuse him with Franklin, or with Adams, or with Jefferson. You would say, "Oh, turn this way. Oh, yeah, you're President Washington," you know? You'd know, because you're looking at the image of him. Now, when you looked at the Lord Jesus, you're seeing the exact image of his person, or it could be translated, his substance, because that's the same way that the word's going to be used in Hebrews 11:1, when it talks about faith being the substance of things hoped for. That is the essential character of that thing, what that thing is really like. And what's more, it's not just creation, but he goes on to say, "upholding all things by the word of his power." So, that is the Lord's maintenance of the creation, what theologians have referred to as his providence. And the fact that the universe holds together is by his word. Now, that's a point Peter will later make, negatively in a sense, because in 2 Peter 3, that doctrine's being attacked. People are saying, "Well, where's the promise of his coming? The Lord's never going to come to judge?" I mean, we're in a closed system, right? God never intrudes, God never intervenes. And he says this, they're willingly ignorant of, that God did judge the world before, didn't he? That we have the story of the worldwide flood. And God can do it again. By his word, he not only made the waters, but he made the waters separate from the land. And the one who can do that by his word, was able by that same word, to bring the waters over the earth and flood it. And by that same word, the world that now is, is reserved for fire. So, we're not looking for the world to end in a nuclear conflagration, because North Korea gets better missiles than they have now, or because rogue states develop greater powers of developing atomic weaponry. We're not looking for the world to end, because we either get too close to the sun, or too far away from the sun, or because of chlorofluorocarbons, or greenhouse gases, or any other calamity, a pestilence that might engulf the world. No, Revelation talks all about those sorts of things, but all of them in a localized manner. In other words, they're not going to be allowed to affect everyone everywhere to the utter annihilation of all of humanity. It's not going to happen that way. The world is going to end by the word of God, when he says it will, and how he says it will. And he's upholding our universe by that powerful word. So, the Lord Jesus is extraordinary and incomparable. Now, comments on those before we look at the next description of him there? Hold on a second. Try it again? If we keep getting feedback, Brother Henry will do the Star Spangled Banner like Jimi Hendrix. Just kidding. Please pause for technical difficulties. Oh, okay, that's a good idea. Yeah.
I've always, I've always found these passages to be certainly mysterious, profound, and I get that sense that I've never been able to put my head around. And what I'd like to say is, in the word that he used concerning that the Son of God maintains the universe. And as it brings out the fact that the Son of God maintained the universe, it's not just that he upholds it. We've got to ask ourselves, what is the purpose for the universe? Why was it made? Why was it created? And the important thing is to realize that science can never give us the answer to that question. Science can analyze and study the universe and give you a lot of facts about the universe in details concerning the chemistry of it, and certain principles that make it work, and that make it run, and so forth. But science can never, ever tell you the reason for its existence. He's only one who can give us and tell us the reason for his existence. And this goes back to the statement that God speaks. And what a wondrous thing it is that God speaks. Where would we be if God didn't speak? And the wonder is that God himself has spoken, hasn't he? And he has spoken, and he has spoken here, and told us that the reason for the universe is the Son. The whole thing was made for him. Not only was it made for him, it was made by him. And in a sense, it was made in him. In other words, as we look at the whole thing, and we consider the whole of the universe, to whatever ability our minds can even begin to contemplate it, I mean, the vastness of it, the bigness of it, stars that are moving far away from planet Earth and from our galaxy, at speeds that are unimaginable, even the mightiest telescopes can't tell us where the end of it is. Where's it all going? Why is it all there? And ultimately, the question, why are you here? Why am I here? What's the meaning of your life? What's the meaning of my life? What's the reason for it? Oh, thank God, for God who has spoken. And everything that God has spoken, the entirety of that message, the completeness of that message, the totality of everything God has to say, he has fully said it in the person of the Lord Jesus Christ. In Colossians terminology, would be this. On my mind, ever since I had COVID, brain fogged. But in him, or in, all the thread of wisdom and knowledge. And one of the mighty things that these first passages are telling us about the maintenance of the Son, concerning the universe, is that he, he knows what it was made for. It was made in him, the whole thing. And not only was it made in him, he is the heir of it all. In other words, it was made for him. So, whatever history means, whatever the purpose of history is, it's for him. When it's all said and done, when it's over, it's all for him. And the beauty of what this is telling us is, that he not only sustains and upholds the universe by the word of his power, he does that, but he sustained and maintained the very reason for which it was made, the very purpose for which it was made. And he himself is the one who maintains it, in the sense that he is presently carrying it along, not just as a dead weight, but the whole entire reason for its existence. The Son of God himself bears it, and is conveying, even now, including you and me, and taking what God's own mind had in mind for creating it in the first place. I don't know what that says to you, but it is a wondrous thing. And it brings before us again the centrality of it all, and that's caliber. And there at Calvert, if ever the whole thing would have broken, if ever the whole upholding and the maintaining of the universe would have come undone, it would have happened there at Calvert. When the Son cried to the God, "My God, my God, why hast thou forsaken me?" And yet, there was the Son, and the Son held, and the Son was obedient unto that even the death of the cross. And he there, in that sense, laid the foundation for the upholding and the guaranteeing of every creative purpose of God, even before the foundation of this world, and that it would ultimately come to its complete and total completion and fulfillment. And the Son received it, because it was all made for him. And so, in that sense, what is the reason for your existence? What is the reason for mine? What is the purpose for your life? What is the purpose for mine? Thank God, for the Son, who maintains, and is conveying it all, including individual personalities like you, who are in him, and guaranteeing that in the end, and come the new heavens, the lights of you and me will be finished, born through it all, for the glory of the Son, and the inheritance of the Son for all eternity.
Thank you for that. The verse in Philippians 1 comes to mind, "He who began a good work in you will be faithful to complete it unto the day of Christ Jesus." And how wonderful to have that security of being born along. We'll see as we go through Hebrews, such as in chapter 2, that the original man that was put on earth, Adam, failed to achieve what God wanted. And he failed because he stepped out of his proper relationship to God. And that's something the Lord Jesus has not done. He's the heir of all things, but the heir of all things, who never wants to inherit all those things at the expense of his Father. In other words, he's not going to bypass the Father and seize those things for himself. He's actually going to achieve the Father's full plan for the world as it presently exists, when he comes to reign for a thousand years, and he's going to bring in the new heavens and the new earth. And we remember 1 Corinthians 15 talks about, "When he has put all things under his feet, he'll deliver up the kingdom to God, his Father, that God may be all and all." So, even there, he's going to enjoy these things, and maintain and achieve these things, to the glory of his Father. And of course, the basis of it, as far as we're concerned, we could have no part in the greatness of this God, or his plan for the universe, where there not something done about sin. And it says, "When he had by himself purged our sins," or some translate it, "when he had by himself made purification for our sins." And that's going to be emphasized later, especially in chapters 9 and 10 of this book. But we see the completion of the work, because he sat down. And notice where he sat down, at the right hand, which as you know, we even have a colloquially, a colloquial expression, we speak about someone being my right-hand man. And we say, you know, this is a person that's in a position of responsibility, they're the person I lean on, they're my chief advisor, and so forth, my conciliary. And so, this is my person in the supreme place of authority. And here, he's at the right hand of the majesty on high. And there are a lot of implications to him going there, and to that position he has. But Hebrews will unpack that for us later. Now, notice, verse 4 then brings in this question of the angels. And I think probably we're about at the end of the time for the session. So, we, is there anything else after this session, as we kill tonight? No, okay. So, he introduces the angels and says, "The Lord is so much better than the angels, as he has by inheritance obtained a more excellent name than they." And we're going to find out, again, citing Brother Wilbur's observation, that he had to bolster these claims from the scripture. So, we're going to get what the scholars call a catena, a chain of scripture. It's what I like to think of as a scripture machine gun, okay? Rat-ta-ta-ta-ta-ta, you know, just coming at you, firing away. We're going to get seven passages of scripture referred to, that are going to explain just how much greater than the angels, the Lord Jesus is, how he is superior to them, and how he's obtained a more excellent name than they. But I think we'll probably pick that up in the morning, unless you have compelling desire. Feel free, brother.
Where it tells us, "being the brightness, glory, express him into his person, upholding all things by the word of his power." When he had by himself made purification for sin, sat down at the right hand of the majesty. And in the context of the introduction in the book of Hebrews, when we simply think of him purifying our sins, and making purification for our sins, we're really not grasping the scope of the whole thing. It doesn't just have to do with mankind, it has to do, again, with the whole of the universe. And certainly, mankind is a critical element, because technically, if you're in Christ, and Christ is now human, then when all things were made for him, then they were also made for man. And now, we have to get into our heads, look at the condition mankind is in. And yet, Hebrews is going to point us to a whole different and new man. See this man. So, again, when we contemplate the whole universe, and we contemplate the purposes for it all, when it says here, that when he had made purification for sins, obviously, if you don't fix mankind, for whom the whole thing was made, you've lost. The whole universe, the significance of the universe is lost. So, yes, thank God he made purification for powers, but the concept is bigger than that. And the concept is of a creator, so faith, that not only was he the creator of the whole thing, but then when man, for whom it was made, went wrong, and then we bailed against the Creator itself, and all we, like sheep, have gone astray, we have turned everyone to his own way. That is the fundamental issue of the horror of sin, and what sin has done. When that happened, the effects of it... When that happened, the effects of it affected the whole thing. And this is presenting to us the wonder of the Son of God, who was the Creator himself of it all, that when it went wrong and when it went bad, not just mankind, but the whole thing, he himself, not just as a creature or some tremendous angel tinkering with the universe and trying to put the whole thing right. No, 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 oh, thank God. When it came to the whole thing being salvaged, the whole thing being rescued, the whole thing being upheld, the whole thing being maintained, the whole thing being carried to its complete and total fulfillment as it was in the mind of God, the Creator himself, and fixed the whole thing. That's the scope of what we're dealing with, not just merely that he made purification for all.
What you said about how man was well-created, for man, Christ became the man, really was true when a lot of, heard a lot of young believers say that they're leaving a space open to the possibility of sentient alien life in the universe and things like that. And it just knocks that straight off its foundation if there isn't. To think that because Christ became a man, something that Tony, without to think about the good universe is created for us and to be able to have it. He made everything for our seasons, everything is designed. And so that we can find God in it too, because the glory of it all makes you say there's got to be a God out there in some of the ways that you were brought to the total.
Yeah, Brian is making the point again for the recording of the internet also.
Younger believers' notion that they want to leave room for sentient alien life out there, when it's rightly been pointed out here in Hebrews 1 that the centerpiece of God's creation is man. And the Lord Jesus didn't become some sort of alien life form, he became a man. And so he's going to establish all of God's purposes in regard to man because the creation was made for man to behold and enjoy, and the seasons were determined, the stars, the sun and the moon and so forth, for man's benefit and also for man to see creation as grandeur and give glory to God and say, "What a great God this is who's made all these things." I hope that's a fair summary. I may have missed something, sorry, but yes, please do.
You know, I speak in assembly or something, you got to finish by 12 o'clock. I get it right, I never know what to say. I am very bad at being able to, you know, know when to say, what to say, move from the get and finish it. And the same thing happens when you go to a book. I don't know how much time you spend in the past, how much time you stay in one area. But I will say, because I know he moves, and thank God for that. But I would say something that is critically important to hear in the introduction and at the beginning, which the writer immediately goes to the Son, to the Son. And like he has said, the book is all going to be about the superiority of the Son, the superiority of the Son, how the Son is better, superior, the uniqueness of the Son. But one of the things that tremendously important, again, to tell ourselves and emphasize is this. I want to say it this way, especially to these Jewish professing believers, okay? And in the Jewish mind, that tendency that they had to think that they had God in a box. They had God in a box. And even over against the whole Gentile world, they saw themselves as, "We've got God in a box." And something that we've got to get a hold of is that when this was written, this was turning into a Gentile world. And so there was a great, great, great auspices of that to Jews, that you are pursuing this Gentile paganism? This Gentile blasphemy of worshiping a man as if he's God? And so there was a lot of pressure on these people by their religious leaders and by that whole mindset of, "Where are the Jews? We know who God is." And so it's interesting how the writer, right from the beginning, when he opens, the first word out of his mouth is "God." And not just any God, but the God of our fathers, the Jewish God, the God of Israel. Because what he's now going to emphasize here is that there has never been, never will be, anything that has ever been revealed or made known about that God that you think you know apart from the Son. And that's powerful. And that goes deeper than just the written word. Because when you go into Romans, chapter 1, and Paul there will go and tell you that, you know, "In the visible things of God, even his eternal power and Godhead, have been made known to the creature by thee, the universe around you." You see, and you sit there and you say, "Well, there you go." Now, even the lost, even the Gentile, even the apparition, has come to know something about God through creation. Oh, yeah? And who made it real? The Son? There is nothing that has ever been known about God that can be known about God or that will ever be known about God that isn't known by the Son.
Acts, chapter 7, please, verse 44. On the ride up here, I was listening to a message by Brother John Lennox on the book of Acts. And he was giving a really, he called it the fastest overview of Acts you've ever had in your life. And it was pretty close to accurate, I think. But anyway, he described Stephen's message in Acts 7 as kind of an early form of the book of Hebrews. So Acts 7, verse 44, because we can't read the whole thing, but you could do that on your own time with prophet, and you'll see a lot of commonality with Hebrews. Acts 7, 44. "Our fathers had the tabernacle of witness in the wilderness, as he appointed, instructing Moses to make it according to the pattern that he had seen, which our fathers, having received it in turn, also brought with Joshua into the land possessed by the Gentiles, whom God drove out before the face of our fathers until the days of David, who found favor before God and asked to find a dwelling for the God of Jacob. But Solomon built him a house. However, the Most High does not dwell in temples made with hands. As the prophet says, 'Heaven is my throne, and earth is my footstool. What house will you build for me?' says the Lord. 'Or what is the place of my rest? Has my hand not made all these things? You stiff-necked and uncircumcised and hardened ears, you always resist the Holy Spirit. As your fathers did, so do you. Which of the prophets did your fathers not persecute? And they killed those who foretold the coming of the Just One, of whom you now have become, the betrayers and murderers, who have received the law by the direction of angels and have not kept it.'" All of that is totally the themes that we're exploring in the early chapters of Hebrews. So we see this was a very big problem, as Henry said, that they thought they had a handle on God, and yet it's the Lord Jesus who said, "Jerusalem, Jerusalem, thou that stonest the prophets and killst those who were sent unto thee. How often would I have gathered thee as a mother hen gathers your chicks, but ye would not." And now we spoke about them being the sons of the murderers of the prophets, who consented to their deeds, and that the blood of all the martyrs, from righteous Abel to Zechariah, was going to be visited upon that generation. So this is the kind of audience that they were having to contend with, that these Hebrew believers were coming out of that and still being assailed by such people. And they have to be directed, as our brother put so well, back to the Son, who is the final and ultimate revelation of God, as well as the one who's always been revealing God right the way along. Comments or questions? That's right, Brother Paul has pointed out that other passages of Scripture, like Romans 2, point out that they're trying to hold on to these things of the Old Testament, and yet their actions are showing they haven't even entered into what was being revealed by those things. And certainly, we could add a lot of cross-references on that, but that's an excellent point, brother, thank you. Incidentally, we don't want to get so caught up with the Jewish side of this thing that we forget that there's great application to the Gentiles. Because I was preaching on Acts 17 this morning, and Paul says the exact same thing to the folks on Mars Hill. He says, "The God, the Lord of heaven and earth, who made all things, doesn't dwell in temples made with hands." And so it's an issue for humanity, not just the Jews who are falling into this error, but all human beings have the tendency to diminish God from his true glory and make false gods, make idols. Comment by Henny.
Point in Acts 7, Stephen saying that to the Jews, quoting Solomon, "The most high-glowed, not preponderant hand." And now Paul coming to Mars Hill and telling the Gentiles, "The living God doesn't dwell in temples made with hands," tells them what Judaism is without the Son. Without the Son, Judaism is nothing more than one more idol, pagan, human interpretation of the universe. And any interpretation of the universe that you come to that bypasses the Son will be a lie. Solomon stopped. Oh, I think there's a parallel passage here that's been mentioned, that in order to get the thrust of Hebrews 1, 1 through 4, with a parallel passage that helps us get our minds around it. It's Colossians 1, and it's 16, and then verse 20. And I think it should be read, again, not just purification for our sins, but the necessary work that the Son needed to do himself in order to one day reconcile all things to God. One day, the whole of the universe, and not just mankind, but even angelic, the angelic realm, the whole of the universe, things in heaven, things on earth, and things on the earth will be reconciled, even Satan will bow to him. If Mount Bishop, and he himself, because of the Son, has to own his defeat and God's triumph and his ability in spite of the rebellion that he inaugurated and then communicated to the human race. God by the Son has succeeded in reconciling all things to him. What a glorious thing that is. So Colossians 1, verse 16. "For by him were all things created, that are in heaven and that are in earth, visible and invisible, whether they be thrones, or dominions, or principalities, or powers; all things were created by him and for him. And he is before all things, and by him all things consist." And then it goes on concerning him, verse 19. "For it pleased the Father that in him should all things dwell; and having made peace through the blood of his cross, by him to reconcile all things to himself, by him, I say, whether they be things in earth or things in heaven." Glorious, sir.
Amen. So Brother Wilbur has pointed out that once again, Stephen in Acts 7, Paul in Acts 17, are referring back to Scripture. These were things that were known, but because they didn't have the Son, they didn't remember them, they didn't pay attention to them, they were ignorant of them. We might call this willful ignorance. So they chose to disregard God's revelation through his Son to their cost. But Solomon was saying the same type of thing, that even when he built the temple and dedicated it, he said, "Behold, the heaven of heavens cannot contain thee, much less this house which I've built." So that makes that point, amen. I just wanted to make a quick, practical witnessing or even Christian living point, that we live in a day of pluralism. In other words, there's a lot of different religions and different beliefs, and there's a lot of pressure put on us to recognize that there's good things in all religions, good things in all belief systems. And this is the fallacy of that, what we're talking about here. If they don't have the Son, 1 John 5 is pretty clear. "He who hath not the Son hath not life; he who has the Son has life," it says. So it's the question, what do they do with God's Son? And if they don't have the Son, right, I don't care what else they say, that may sound good or plausible, we don't join up or link with them or approve of what they do.
He just said, the thing about pluralism, in other words, that everybody's got an opinion. Everybody's got an opinion. It's just one more opinion, pluralism, you incorporate everything. That's what chapter 2 is going to be. I just thought that that would be appropriate to see the very flow of the book and of the Holy Spirit as he presents this whole thing. And that's what chapter 2 is addressed, no pluralism.
Man has made up all these religions, but the unifying factor of them really is a rejection of the true God, who's revealed himself through his Son, the Lord Jesus Christ. And of course, we know man doesn't live in a vacuum. There's a father of lies that's deceiving and blinding men's minds. So yeah, thank you for that observation, Brother Rich, very good. Yes. I'm sorry, say that again? Yeah. Yeah, that's right. That's right, they don't want to repent, they reject repentance. And again, Acts 17 says, "God commands all men everywhere to repent." And again, Acts 17 says, "God commands all men everywhere to repent," because they've all got it wrong, doesn't matter which ism it is, if they're not building on Christ, they've got it wrong. Amen. Okay, brother, well I see the ladies are moving behind the scenes to get a snack together, so maybe a brother could close our time in prayer, and also give thanks for the refreshment. And we'll pick up tomorrow and do a fairly expeditious, without going too fast and leaving out a lot of great truths, so we're balanced here, you know? And this is why Henry and I have different styles, but we work together and it's complementary as the Lord helps us, so, and as you help us too. So we'll keep on track, and we'll pick it up tomorrow with verse 5. Of course, if there's something said tonight, and during the night you think, "Oh, I wish I had said this or that," you can feel free to bring that in tomorrow, we'll make time for that as well. Or a question that arises, exactly. But if a brother would now pray and give thanks for the refreshments, we'd appreciate
Lord, we thank you for this time that we had in this study, this rich book, Hebrews. Lord, we ask for your blessing upon this week, as we navigate through the book, and try and learn more of your word, Lord, and just learn more about you through your words. Lord, we thank you for this, these refreshments put out, these sisters and the work that they've put in for the week so far, and what we'll be doing for the rest of the week. Give you thanks and praise in your Son Jesus' name, amen.